I call being to order and on the welcome all of you here tonight and appreciate you coming. At this time we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance and we're gonna ask great people later tonight and then rotate clients gonna have an area.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for your goodness for this day, for your many blessings in our lives, God. We acknowledge that. We thank you for your son, Jesus. Just pray your blessings upon the meeting tonight, Lord. And we also pray especially for Lynn Mitchell, God, that you would just be with him, that you would touch his body physically, Lord, bring healing there. Just pray, Lord, for our mayor, God, for Wade, Lord, that you bless him, bless his family, bless the proceedings that go on tonight, each member of the city council, God. We pray for wisdom and your guidance and that everything that is done be done for your glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I want to say thank you to James Clanton for coming. I appreciate that very much. James, I know you're very busy, but you're always welcome. And I'd say thank you to all of our local pastors. We try to give each one a chance to come and pray with us and pray for us. I appreciate you doing that. First item on our agenda tonight is approve minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Paul in favor, CJ. This time I welcome David Forlanel, our C3 director and leader. And Mr. David, let's you take the floor. You have your mic. I'll let you have the mic. Can you talk loud enough?
I believe I need it.
Okay.
I appreciate that. It's good to be with you tonight. And I just wanted to offer a bit of an update and answer any questions you have about C3 and the work that we're doing. I was thinking about the work that we do. You know, you really can't appreciate the game of golf unless you know the sport and you try the game. The work that we do is behind the scenes. So if some people may like this talk about golf, it's just hitting the ball with a stick, the ball with a stick, or chasing the ball around the pasture. Our work is pretty complicated, but the simple answer to how this is done is that you have to combine and package your resources and assets in ways that will attract the attention of those that need some of what you're offering. Once you do that, you also got to realize that everybody else is gonna do it the same time. So you got to be competitive. And I commend this council and city for doing that. You have buildings available, you've got sites available there. They're at the highest ranking as far as the advantage site out on the interstate. We had some professionals look at our sites, 10 of the top sites in three counties about a year ago. And one thing that we had talked so much about is we got a variety of sites, so we showed variety, but they see four advantage sites. And they're saying, well, all these others are not quite up to par, or that they don't have all of the work that was done, the engineering and the soil borings and all of those things that you go through to get that big book and that advantage site certification. So I commend the council for being competitive. What you have to do then is to have an advantage. And the advantage is according, it's site, or project by project, it has to do exactly with what they're looking for. And they're gonna find it exactly and commit to the, you know, to the one community that has that clear, compelling message, the thing that is just exactly what they were looking for. So these things take time. We're working on many projects right now that just haven't decided yet. They've not told us anything negative, but nothing positive. So it's a wait and wonder, you know, what we can do so we stay in touch with them. And yet, we're also always out trying to attract attention of others to say, come and look at the C3 region and what these 15 communities have to offer. We have 3,900 acres of developed sites in our three counties. We've got about 16 buildings of being on a half square foot space. The buildings I mentioned that you have, which has always been the case that people do want to look at buildings first. So you're gonna get business because of those buildings. And you've got interest right now in every building that you have in this community. We're looking at, you know, getting the prices updated and things, talking to owners about that just this week, about people that have, or for people that have asked for information on those. I've had someone a couple of weeks ago that asked about the county-owned building out at the airport. But then you get back with them, you give them the information, well, let's get our customer, let's see if the need is now. We say, it doesn't cost you anything, come look, please do that. Well, not quite yet. But activity, at least results, that activity is important first, that you have to be in the game and then to the point that people can consider. And I think that's the best way to sell in areas where they set foot on your soul. And that means that they may commit a lot of time and energy and cost to get here. I've given you a good bit of information. Did you have this article in Business Alabama in your packet? There's an article that came out in this issue. It's the current issue, Business Alabama, October issue. This is the state's only business magazine statewide. The attention that we get in a magazine like this, we just don't know. It's more that planting seeds that gets attention of people to say, gosh, those folks over there are doing something different than you, and that maybe we should take a look. And that's what means so much when you are able to pick up some free publicity like this. We had the governor visit Fayette recently, and the governor's comments were that you're doing the right thing and that you are gonna win, you're gonna make some things happen. And so he recognizes that. We also just, this past week, have received the Southern Business Development magazine. Mike Randall has spoke to our annual meeting just a couple of years ago as a publisher of this magazine. Well, Mike put our full-page ad just across from the table of contents, which we couldn't have asked for a better placement on that. And also in this magazine, he mentions the top 20 automotive sites in the southeast for OEMs, which is original equipment manufacturers, the manufacturing facilities such as Toyota in Mississippi. And he mentions a Gwin site, mainly because of what happened several years ago with Magnus Stier looking at that site and the fact that it was put together. But again, what people remember about that is that the communities came together to make that a possibility and put yourself in the running for that. In the back of this has listings of the communities or counties that are within 250 miles of five facility manufacturers that was for automotive. But you'll see in these, which there's Marion County, Hamilton, that's within nine, we're within 230 miles of nine plants. We had a booth at the Southern Automotive Trade Show in Biloxi just a couple of weeks ago, and we were just swarmed by folks that were looking at our map, a map that's almost on the back of this, whether I show this distance. This is something just, you know, occurred over time, that these automotive companies have a surround. And so it tells a story. And we have in our booth that map there that you see. And of course, this is a handout that we use, the full-page ad for Southern Business Development, and then these lists of these companies in distance to our area. But those are the sort of things that we're doing to attract attention. The other thing that I know that we're all interested in is the Toyota plant and their growth and supplier network. It really hasn't developed much at this point. Maybe seven suppliers that have located there, all within the state of Mississippi, except for one that is in Jasper, but they're really a high supplier. They came with the news that Toyota was gonna be locating in Blue Springs, but that was a company that already had business with Honda. And the folks wanted to live in Birmingham and get over to Honda conveniently, but also one of 22 was gonna be in place now, just over a year away, but attracted them to a spec building that was beside another Japanese company. The thing that we're seeing is pretty common in growth in the communities, and that's that we have lots of companies that feel good about being here, and they're adding, you know, maybe just a few people. It's not attracting the headlines, but that over time and in terms of total numbers, means a lot of folks have a new job, aren't they? And we're really blessed that all of these companies that are in the area, we have six Fortune 500 companies in the three county area, but they all do feel good about being here. They're all growing, but it's small and over time. This is the latest, just out of, literally torn from the newspaper, Wrangler Hiring and also Hamilton Bath Wear in this local, latest edition of the journal, right there. I'm pleased to be working with Hamilton. This is a community that has their founding member of C3, of course, and then you've just shown that willingness to partner with people, so it can be win-win situations. And you've also had the product that we need to attract the attention. And it is such a good community that you're, you're gonna have that competitive advantage. The retail area, it's gonna be the incentives that you're now offering. That's definitely gonna attract attention and it's gonna be better than many other communities in the offer. You're a county seat, you have a community college here, you've got, of course, Walmart Super Center, sort of the base of that retail, which there's so many other small businesses that do really well, and some that are really well-known beyond this immediate area. So Hamilton is a good, good product. We sell the regional assets and the strength, I guess, of C3 is that we can say, we've got maybe several things that you look at, and as that funnel down processes, as communities of sites or buildings get cut, it just gives us a chance to get in the process earlier and to stay in the process longer. And I'm pleased that we're finally getting some attention, just, you know, unexpected attention, places like the Business Alabama folks, Basin Mobile folks, Birmingham, Southern Business Development magazine that goes to site selectors, goes to a lot of corporate officials. And from that, we'll see if we can't make the governor's prediction come true, which says that if you continue to work together, something is going to happen, and eventually you will get something in this area. What the governor doesn't know is that we have been involved in about 800 jobs that have been added, working with existing companies for the most part. There have been two new companies to the area. One is a place called Paradise Canyon Cabins, it's up in Bear Creek. They went into existing building. It was one that was vacated by the Stone Canyon cabins that went to Brilliant. And then we've had the company recently that located in Vernon, which is integrated waste, waste packaging. They're a, actually a company that just refurbishes the Marathon dumpsters that, as those things sit out in the views, and they're gonna get bent and rusted, and they were painting and furnishing. But we've had new, we've had most of our expansions, and that's exactly what happens everywhere. Four out of five jobs are expansion, expanded companies. But yeah, our work is so often unseen, and I appreciate that the mayor calls me about it every day. So he's checking up on me. It's a good relationship and interaction so that, and he knows that we're working on some things that can be a really good process for this community. But a rising tide floats all boats, and as other communities are succeeding, it's gonna help you too, the people that are here able to make the commute, maybe to those jobs, that mile a minute commute that people have been visiting. Just this past week in Birmingham, I went to both EGS Commercial Real Estate and Graham County Real Estate, which are people that are, most of their listings, activities in Birmingham area, we're just down the street. Expand your area that you're working within, be more of those boots-on-the-ground type people that can promote this area, that will work with you and help you to fulfill your client's wishes when things come up. And the fact that I was over there, you know, an hour and 15 minutes to those offices right downtown is a plus. And so we're, we're looking for good things to happen. Doesn't happen as quick as I would like, for sure. The same for you. And it's, but yet it's something that you just have to do, and day by day, that gets you to where you want to be. I'd be happy answering the questions that you have.
Well, David, I guess, I was on the before with Wayne, someone, and what was the other? You know, whenever you get, I know we can't broadcast here tonight, they had to write it on front page, what's been looking at, or the cameras, but can you drop us a note in the mail and let us know what's, what's going on or something, you know? Let us know if we're getting there. Money's worth.
Yeah.
And there are things we're working on.
I know we can't, I can't, we get out here and talk to you.
Right. Even though that happens too, and it's
Yeah, it gets sound.
Interesting to hear things that people, they'll hear a little bit of things that's true, but by the time it goes around the circuit at the coffee shop, it's totally off. And yeah, that, that's always sensitive, of course. You don't know what's, what's gonna happen as you go through the process and trying to keep courting somebody to the point that you're there at the altar. But we're working on some things that would be sort of transformative to the area that are great post. But it's, right now, as I mentioned, there are retail prospects and manufacturing prospects. And there's, of course, and your people are moving along and moving forward, like Hamilton Bath Wear advertising for employees.
Like these buildings that we got into, these older buildings, are they people that looked at those, like the, what was it you used to call?
Speed Rack.
North River and
Yeah, North River.
Building down, down by the jail, you know, does people look at those older type buildings like that?
They do. And they look at them for several reasons. They're, you don't have to use your imagination so much to say, well, this could work or it couldn't. I mean, it happens that quickly. Rather, just looking at a piece of dirt. But then they also know if it, if it could work, it's gonna save them time and money. And so that's why we have, I mentioned four out of five new jobs come from expansions, and probably four out of five prosperer visits come from having buildings. And you've got a variety of buildings now, the one at the airport, one near a runway. And so that's unique. And then the Speed Rack that North River owns, the company. And of course, the city owns the Coop, which, which you're using for employee, employment, you know, dot company. So there's everything we need except for the people's confidence in this economy and the future of the country. And you don't read too much about new projects. We've heard recently about the big mega projects that come in only the bigger cities. Mobile and getting the Airbus, Yokohama going to West Point. But they've had a lot of people over there that work to Prime Foods that are now out of work, a lot, a whole lot of infrastructure in place. And then this city get a whole lot of money, too. They, they, they went ahead and committed all the big deal settlement money that hasn't even come yet. They're, they're, what they may get from that. And then they've also been able to reinvest some of the, those recovery zones from the Katrina that they got a lot of money in the city.
So things are changing. All kinds. Where you get one thing, then perhaps you, something else moves on. You know, to begin with, with the, over at Blue Springs, the Toyota place, we were told, I guess, sort of informative that we perhaps might be in the running somewhere in this area, region, right in, over in our mountain, to get some of the spout plants. Well, and then we hear that the barber sort of nip fat in the bud and
Yeah, we're able to control those.
Is there any chance of that?
There's just a few things that we need to happen. They need to come up with a new model, which wouldn't be unusual at all. You can see Mercedes now adding the C-Class and the fact that they do multiple models. Safer Honda got Nissan down in New Jackson, Mississippi. I think they have eight different vehicles, including trucks and vans and cars. The Corolla that's made at the Toyota Blue Springs is the only model that they make, so we wish they would add another. It's likely that they will, but they just haven't yet. The other thing that would help us is if they add the, just the volume, the units that they produce at that plant would make a difference. If they get up over 100,000, which it's about that right now, but they need to, they need to get beyond 100,000. 100,000 parts for most of these suppliers are small. They can send them to warehouse, normally even within the gates of the Toyota plants. They just build their own logistics center. Mercedes is doing that now on their site. So it's just a fancy name for warehouse. The people that can justify the shipping cost are gonna go ahead and ship it and not move and build and invest to a degree that they needed to build a plant. Those things we think are happening. They're gonna just sort of break free of where they started to get to where their potential is, and then we will have an opportunity. Today I had, this happened at 4:33, sort of interesting, Alec Leith had spoke to our annual meeting, and we've been invited and looking forward to having our annual meeting here in Hamilton this year. It'll be in January. But at our annual meeting, the only have folks are involved in a lot of different things related to economic development. Alec Leith is with Bosch and Vingham in Birmingham. But Alec does a lot of incentives negotiation for clients, and he's almost sort of created an industry for himself in addition to his law practice and working just with taxes and other issues with the companies that they work for. But we've hired Alec to look at companies that are not located, automotive companies in the southeast, because it just seemed kind of dumb that they wouldn't be. And most have followed the, these manufacturing facilities for automotive, most of the suppliers have followed. But we've sent Alec Goen study, you know, what these people would be looking for since you worked for them. He was the guy that helped with Volkswagen, for instance, going up to Chattanooga. He was their lead attorney on that. But find these companies and let's see if they, first of all, if they have anything in the area, and then let's dig a little deeper and see what their, what their plans are, what would trigger that. Well, they have a research staff there in his office, and so just for a really reasonable amount, he said, well, I'll, I'll take that on. And then what we'll do is, when we discover people that have projects, I'll make my money in telling them, hey, I'm here and I do this sort of thing for a living, and I can help you with it. So that means Alec may bring us a project someday and he'll beat us up on incentives, but that's to be expected. Alec sent me the email this afternoon. He said he had, he had 69 companies identified that are Toyota suppliers lacking in presence in Alabama, Mississippi, and Tennessee. It's noteworthy that many others also supply, or they also supply other OEMs located in the region, original equipment manufacturers, which are the cart plants. And so they're gonna go through the process of sort of looking through those a little closer and see if he feels sure that we'll end up with a target of 40 companies that we can go after. And then, of course, Alec's already in the door by having called and talking. So we're, we're trying to be proactive in this, that when, when the gate opens and Toyota says we're expanding, there's gonna be a whole lot of folks that are gonna be thinking about, it's a time now to be a supplier, and we want to already introduce to them. But it, just that wave of suppliers hasn't yet happened, but I think that we will and we'll see.
I wondered about, and I've talked about with those, Brad, but is it two things? One, there's, everybody's sitting on the money because of various things that they're, but the manufacturer's sitting on the money. And two is the, down the road, that they might, these incentive opening plants in foreign countries, the rate of currency and the cost of labor overseas. At the beginning, they start coming back and put up more manufacturing in the United States. And is that a long-term trend that's going in our favor?
There's becoming this equalization. It's talked about that maybe it's not so great to be in China or even be in Mexico, even though if you look at the new cart plants, several of the last ones have gone to Mexico. And yet, we are seeing companies come back, reshoring it's called. And I talked last week to a company up in Minnesota that was in the New York Times, an article about how they were having to train people to do sewing. They do a lot of leather goods there, but they were having to find people, students, maybe just part-time help. And of course, this company's coming back from China, thinking, well, we'll just do this in our home in Minnesota. But when I worry about people leaving sewers, we still have a lot of folks here that can do that and have experience in that. And so as we talked to them, he just wants to contract with me. He said, well, I've had this long-distance relationship with our plants in China. I may not want to be down in your area, but we're sitting in the list of companies that do similar work. So we just look for leads constantly. I have called Under Armour recently, not for a sewing plant, but for distribution because they are growing and trying to catch Nike and size and different types of products that, variety that Nike does. Amazon's building distribution centers right now, so we're trying to track down a good column of Amazon. They're doing more regional, which is, I think, good for us because there's less of these just mega hubs that's gonna become because of gas prices that people want. Maybe they use Memphis, but then maybe they need something closer for those customers within this immediate area. One of the automotive companies, I just happened to sit at breakfast by in Biloxi. I don't know if you saw on the map. I've got a map on the back of my car that shows our area. But he said, well, we do have a lot of customers down that way, and we're, we're right now shipping our products there. But, you know, we might consider it. And I thought, great, you know, it's just a state that I'm sitting with this guy at breakfast. Well, as soon as I get back to my booth, here comes a logistics, this is a 3PL, third-party logistics company that has to do all the work for the company. And he's the one who wants to know, and he's the one who would invest in, maybe lease or purchase a building for a warehouse. So those sorts of things, you know, we're just planting seeds. And to see where that might lead is to stay with them, but know that there's a lot of competition out there for these things. Yeah, that's right. Companies are sitting on everything they would need except confidence. They got the cash to do it. They probably know where they would want to be if they were gonna do something. But it's been, well, not just the healthcare, just where the, where the country's going, I guess is where.
It's still a tough time.
Well, David, thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
I want to ask you, I appreciate you coming. I know we do talk regularly, and I know you're working extremely hard. Not only for Hamilton, but all, all three counties. I appreciate what you do.
Thank y'all so much.
Thanks for that.
Nobody's getting laid, probably two, three times. That'd be all right.
This time, like the record from Dave, Joe Seth Gooden Mills, K West proposal for proposed, grand new drive, bridge replacement. And it's gonna run about 72. train new drive, bridge replacement, and it's gonna run about seventy-two thousand dollars. We're getting a grant to replace that bridge, which is gonna be about anywhere from nine-hundred thousand to a million dollars to replace the bridge. Our part will be the seventy-two thousand dollars, and uh which we'll have to pay for that. We won't be getting a new bridge there, and the work needs to be done. I've already done just a few things, but uh this will be my recommendation to accept that proposal. We do have it in the budget this year to pay for it. But without it, we won't get it. But this is part of, we met, is it a ramp?
Ramp, right.
The county's doing three bridges, Wentos getting a bridge, we're getting a bridge. But it's a pretty good investment, and now Van Ham, and Marion County stocks seven million dollars, all the bridges put together, they were placing on part for our bridge is seventy-two thousand, not a bad deal for about a million dollar bridge. So my recommendation is to get a motion to approve this.
I make a motion, we accept the proposal.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Any other discussion? On paper, say aye. Thank y'all. At this time, I'll ask Amy Gillan, she would come and talk to us about this G S B forty-five rules. Amy's been working on our our audit, and this is something that I can explain to Amy, so I'm gonna let you explain it and why we need to do it and what the purpose of it is, okay?
What do you want me to do?
Yes, ma'am, if you'll just come forward and talk to us, that'd be fine. You need a, you need a, you might not need a mic, but I can deal, I've got one right here.
I don't think so, everybody can hear me.
You'll just, if you want me to hear you, that's fine.
Okay, I had sent an email to Jan, which I think she forwarded to everybody. Has everybody looked at that email?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I'll kinda just go over it a little bit. Um G S B forty-five, what that stands for is governmental accounting standards for. And that's what you follow when we do the audit, it's like you follow G S B and F A S B and all that. And um G S B statement forty-five says that if you um if you have anybody, any retirees that you pay health insurance on, that they're saying, you know, in the past, it's always been just pay as you go, you expense it as you go. But um with that statement, they're saying um you gotta figure out what the liability is and book it on the books. And uh to figure out what the liability is, you have to, in my uh email, I said, if it's less than a hundred, you can do it yourself, if you had less than a hundred employees, you can do it yourself. And if not, if you have greater than a hundred, you have to hire an actuary to do it. Well, the problem though with who would do it? I mean, I couldn't do it because that would lose, I would lose my independence. And plus too, I don't do what actuaries do, I don't know how to do what actuaries do. They're, you know, they, there's not a lot of actuaries out there. But I mean, I'm not aware of one in Hamilton, and if anybody else sees, then you know, we could call any of the quote from them, but um so that's why I said we probably needed to get some quotes, and I got like three different quotes from um people. Let's see, one was thirty-two fifty, one was four thousand, and one was five thousand. Let me, let me make sure I haven't missed anything here then. Okay, so so we know why we have to do it, because we have to record the liability. Well, we have to come up with that liability, so somebody's gotta come up with it. And um so then we talked, and I didn't wanna say one thing on here, that they allow you thirty years to amortize that debt up there, so whatever they come up with, they're gonna say, well, you've got thirty years to get the liability up to where it should be. And the reason they say that is because usually it's gonna be a pretty big liability, because what they're gonna do is actuaries are gonna say, okay, eighty-two employees or ever how many employees you have, what's their life expectancy, what's the health insurance gonna be, you know, and they're gonna come up with this liability. And uh the three companies that quoted, like I said, thirty-two fifty, four thousand, and five thousand, and I can't really recommend one, 'cause I can't lose my independence either, but I could tell you, I mean, normally you would go with the lowest quote, the thirty-two fifty. Uh but they are out of New York, and they, most of their references are from New York cities. And um then they say that it'll take about four to six weeks, once you give them the information, to come up with the uh the data for the actuary, the liability. And on that, Fontana Benefits and Actuary Consulting, they're the next highs, and they're out of um, well, they have they have a place in Louisiana, they have a place in Birmingham, and it seems like they have one in Jacksonville, Florida. I have worked with them before, and I know that they turn the information around pretty quick. I mean, I don't think it'll be four to six weeks, I could verify that with Neil, but um they all sent quotes, and I have the quotes, but I tried to break it down a little bit. So, let's see what else was there was. Like I said, I can't, you know, I can't make the decision for you, I can just put it out there. Of course, you know, after choosing a company, they'll require you to sign a contract, and then they'll calculate the liability, and then we'll use it on the audit, and we'll book it as liability, you know, it might take thirty years to get it up there, but we'll do a little bit every year.
And what that liability show, the cost of what we're paying?
Well, what it'll do is it'll represent how much that um you're gonna be paying in the future for what you've promised employees, you know, like when you retire, we're gonna pay half of your um insurance.
So what's this gonna give us, an idea of what's gonna cost us down the road?
What what the real cost is gonna be going down the road, based on their current, you know, what they're doing right now, they're earning it right now, you're not gonna pay it to later. But because of G S B forty-five, they're making you calculate it and put it on the books.
So is this something that's gonna have to be done every time there's a new employee hired, and every time?
Well, um it's gonna have to be done every three years, it has to be reevaluated every three years. But in these uh in these contracts, all three of them stay, that they'll update it every year. So in essence, if somebody else is hired, they would have to take that into consideration and, you know, work on that.
And that update is in this price, is this a one-time price?
For the three years, yeah, and then they would reevaluate and then do it again.
Is that that's included in the ones that are retired now, the list? Jan, you sent us that list not long ago. I mean, was it that were retired now? I know what you're talking about, about not many employees.
Maybe three, two?
No.
Maybe uh four, five.
Something like that?
Well, um they'll, they will actually bring the liability down.
They will.
Yeah, because we're paying theirs, you know, right now. But I mean, the governmental accounting standards just said, you know, hey, this this is a liability, people really need to know how much it really is, you know, 'cause it's gonna cost, that's, you know, it's usually really high when they calculate it, and that's why they allow you thirty years to amortize it up to where it should be, so.
So as people retire over the next five or ten years and stay retired, and we keep doing this fifth, then we'll know what the cost will be.
They're pretty lost it, based on their life expectancy.
Based on how many years.
And um, you know, they use insurance, I mean, I'm I'm not even sure what this healthcare reform is doing to these calculations, I mean, I'm sure it's not helping them. But um but then, you know, in this email that I sent, I wanted to say a few more things too, like one was, you can set up a trust for this money. Not a lot of people do, but when I say set up trust, you know, you can set money aside for it so that you have it instead of just a liability hanging out there saying that you owe it. Um that is something else that you needed to know. And then other things I was thinking about today is, well, what other options do you have to do this, you know? And I thought, well, if you don't want governmental accounting standards, you know, you wanna cash basis audit, then I could just say these aren't in conformity with GAAP. But that's gonna hurt you when you go to bond markets, I mean, that's not gonna be good.
So we have to do this to comply with our audit, and you can, what you're saying, it's not we can't say, but we don't wanna do it.
If you say you don't wanna do it, then we have to modify the opinion on the report and say these financial statements are not GAAP, you know, because GAAP requires you to do that. And then the only other thing was, you know, if you were stopped doing it, but I don't, I don't, you know, you might could stop doing it going forward, but then you would still have to have actuary evaluation unless you just said, we're not doing it at all anymore for anybody. And that's not, I don't know if you can do that or not, I mean, that's probably illegal things we needed to consider. But that was, you know, so it's either don't do G S B, which is not good when it goes to the bond market, and do this actuary evaluation, or maybe stop doing it overall.
We now have to take as low a speed as we can.
I don't think so.
No, because of the.
Sir. I drove the G S M I from Alabama, it gets a little more, you know, something.
Well, it's, yeah, it's a little bit more, but I just felt like, 'cause he had so many references, like, let me see, where are his references?
Did you say you've worked with him before?
I have, yes. And he got, like, we were on a deadline, we had to have to submit to a government agency by so long, and they didn't realize they had to have it, so we had to have it and get it again, and he worked with me on that. But some of the examples, or not examples, that he gives us references, City of Mountain Brook, City of Pelham, City of Gulf Shores, Baltimore, City of Hoover, City of Homewood, City of Phoenix City, I mean, there's Alabama and Alabama, Tuscaloosa County, City of North Fork, Alabama Housing Authority. And so the only reason I was thinking about him is because the timeframe, and um he's, you know, he's got so many, a lot of these people use the same insurance that y'all do, so he's already got that, you know, whereas in New York, it may take them longer because the fact that they have to find out about all this Alabama stuff to do it. And like I said, there's not actuaries just, I mean, I really have to search to find you three quotes, because they're just not sitting out there. I mean, actually, this um this Fontana I used before, the other one was one that does some work for the state of Alabama, the the highest one, and they're out of Kennesaw, Georgia. And then uh the other one's out of White Plains, New York. But you know, when you start searching, there's just not a lot of actuaries out there. And I feel like that, I mean, like I said, yes, you have less than a hundred employees, so you can um do it, but I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it, so I can't imagine that, you know, anybody else would, but now if y'all know somebody locally, like in Marion County or whatever, I I I wouldn't think there was an actuary in there. But it's still your decision, I mean, you can go with any of them, I'm just trying to get my information.
Well, thank you. Well, the job we wanna make a recommendation on one of these. Go ahead and pursue it, so she can finish her audit. We gotta have it finish her audit.
You have to have it, haven't you?
You have to have it to finish the audit, yes.
That's my recommendation, to go with the one that she's worked with before that knows the.
The Alabama rules.
Yeah, the rules, 'cause it might be quicker, like she says.
Okay, that would be.
That'd be the four thousand dollar.
Yes, sir.
What is the name of that company?
Um Fontana Benefits and Actuary Consulting.
Fontana would've been enough, but where are they at?
Birmingham, they are out, in Alabama, they're in one per- here.
They have a Birmingham office.
I don't know. Yeah.
We'll find out Fontana later.
Is there a second to Tim's motion?
I'll say.
On paper, say aye. Thank you, Amy, come and explain it, 'cause I know I couldn't wait.
Well, maybe I did, but if you have any questions, you can call me.
Okay. The next item's a motion to adjourn, we need to await on that just a second. Tim has said he needs to go on executive session concerning the matter of self-tim. Is it a personal issue?
You want me to name it, or it'd be a personnel issue, but if anybody here in the audit's got anything, it might take a minute.
Well.
Could name a character on the personnel, yeah.
We're done for that, 'cause we're not gonna take any time at all, so what you got?
Yeah, I'm on my promotion.
On paper, say aye. Hopefully we'll be back in a few minutes.
Larry, I'm on my motion, I'm on my team, the session.
Okay, just a second, okay.
Also make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, what, do you want to go to retired? Okay, what about the student worker?
I gave him a wrong, I mean, I have a gun on here.
About the what? What's on the name?
I know, but it's not the one.
I printed wrong, one gave him wrong, one gave him right.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
It's a recommendation to Austin people, it's part-time.
I knew, I didn't say that.
Alex Jones quit, I think last week was his last day, and this is the one that's helped Larry some, volunteered, and he thought this is who he recommended, to take Alex to place.
And I think he is a junior, so there's the potential there that he'll be.
Hopefully, he'll have a couple of years.
This year and next year.
Starting tomorrow, actually, I called Larry this afternoon, made sure, the starting date would be seven twenty-five, and I'll start, pick the date tomorrow.
So we're just replacing one that graduated or something?
He just went to a different job, Alex just went to a different.
He just left the seat and went to a different.
That's right. All we're doing is replacing one of them, a high school student. So is there a promotion to hire Austin people? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not familiar with that.
So I'm on my main question, about a second.
I'll say, is it, we need.
We do, we do need it. So any other discussion on that? Tim had a second, please. On paper, say aye. Thank you very much. All right, Tim, what about a motion to adjourn now?
It's still on the table.
Okay. On the paper, say aye.
Aye.